This is 7:06 and I call it quarter. Let's start with general business. Did you ever have a chance to review the previous minutes?
I did have a move that we approved. The man, the bottom. The bottom again. The bottom now?
Yep.
Okay. I moved that we approved the prior meeting minutes as read, as read proceedings.
Do I hear a second? Margaret seconds. Any discussion? Okay. Tom?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Margaret? Aye. Paul?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye, so that's unanimous. Treasury report. Ken, did you think of Treasury report?
No, we didn't.
Okay. So, was there anything that is a holdover that we will take to the next meeting? No expenses as well?
Yeah, so there was probably advertising expenses, but maybe covered that in the last meeting.
And planning board?
I didn't prepare anything formal for tonight, but I just wanted to make mention that we were approved under one of the grants I thought I'd fore, forgetting which one, of my two other grants, for $15,000 to look into pre-terminating feasibility regarding holy angels. So I will be, I'll be working on that to try and set up consultants to highlight that that money that's been dedicated by the state. Housing Choice Initiative, that was what it was. Housing Choice Initiative grant for $15,000 to help feasibility study for reuse of holy angels. So I'll be, I'll be working on that in some months. CBA, as most folks know, CBA will be holding their public hearing for the proposed 48 next week, Wednesday, starting at 6:30 over at the community center. And those, those are my two main moments.
So anyone have any questions? So before we open the first public hearing, I don't think this is going to be an issue, but I just want folks to understand how we're going to work this is. I'm going to read the synopsis of the motion of each, there are three public hearings. And then I'll turn it over to the members of the planning board to have a brief discussion and, well, they'll turn it over to the planner to give a quick overview, then to the member of the planning board to have a quick discussion, and I'll open up for the audience a comment, and then we can either have a deliberation next meeting or postpone that to the next meeting. So it is, what is it? It is 7:09 and I opened the public hearing for C, the first public hearing is to see if the town will amend Town and Pop to zoning by law section 300 dash 3.1 table of principal uses and section 200 dash 6.6 large-scale ground mounted solar vaultaic installations which seeks to allow large-scale ground mounted solar photomotelic installations, LGSPI, in the agricultural residential AR zoning district by special permit, and establish new dimensional requirements and other controls relative there too. So, Mr. Planner, Michael, do you want to give us an idea of the synopsis?
Yes, thank you. So I'm just going to take a few minutes here to explain to the folks who might not, who are present for the hearing, who might not have been a part of our recent meetings regarding this topic, and give an overview of kind of why we're here and where we're going on this, obviously where we're going to be dependent on the planning board's vote on this. So the, initially there was a, there was interest expressed for a specific large piece of land along South Street with several acres already cleared. As most folks know, that piece of land was, the four year sound, Sampin, everything.
The pit.
The pit, yes. The planning board agreed that the space was potentially ideal for any new solar in theory, should solar be allowed in that zone, which it wasn't currently. The zoning by law limits large-scale ground-mounted solar to the commercial and industrial district. There is no provision that allows solar in the southern portion of town, northern portion of town, namely the agricultural residential district. Re-zoning the subject area in the AR zone to commercial industrial was initially explored by the board. However, there was a major concern that expanding the commercial and industrial would create other potential unwanted impacts, as any use allowed in a CNI district would then be permitted on, in any new CNI district. There was also concerns about the potential for spot zoning, which is a prohibited practice treating individual parcels of land differently for the benefit of the city. While the planning board reviewed its options, it was brought to my attention that recent case law had expanded protections of solar as a use under Mass General Legislature 48 section 3, which is the zoning exemptions. In that law states, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." Whereas the previous practice by S.A.S.E. towns was to adopt a certain zoning district which permitted large-scale solar, new case law suggests that towns do not have the ability to restrict solar as they once it. In P.L.H.L.L.C. versus East Long Meadow in 2019, Land Corps ruled that the protections afforded to solar energy systems is similar to the protection for schools, churches, and childcare facilities. In Tracer Lane versus Walton, a 2022 case, the court determined that 1% to 2% of land was not adequate to adhere to the protections of, or I should say, 1% to 2% of land that's been zoned to allow for solar was not adequate to adhere to the protections afforded solar in MGL 48 section 3. Tracer Lane also affirms the ability for towns to regulate the use, just not such that it would unreasonably or act, how should I say? Tracer Lane affirms the ability for towns to regulate the use, but not so much that would unreasonably regulate it or act as a prohibition. Regulations must be tied to public health, safety, and welfare. In Town Council's opinion, the town's ability to require special permits is still intended After several conversations with Town Council regarding recent case law interpretations and the Attorney General's actions for approving new solar bylaws, it was decided the planning board would explore expanding solar as an allowable use in the AR district by special permit only. Staff explored several recent bylaws that were approved by the AG's office for insight into the kind of limitations that have been acceptable within new solar districts. The proposed bylaw takes into consideration, the proposed bylaw tonight, takes into consideration several of the proposed limitation, proposed limitations staff reviewed, most notably in Warren, Mass., they passed a solar buck by law limiting new projects areas that have been cleared for at least five years prior to application. We make specific note of that, it's been a consistent concern amongst pretty much everybody that I've talked to, that it is not desirable to have land clearing, especially clearing of potentially dead forests, whether or not it's designated as protected forest. Basically, we don't want elimination trees in the name of solar. So we specifically noted that, as well as other dimensional controls such as minimum size, maximum size, setbacks. The 100-foot setbacks provided in the draft language mimics the nature that exists in the current bylaw, which governs the commercial industrial district, the commercial industrial district being the only district in town that's running at last. Minimum acreage was modeled after where it is. On the advice of Council, staff prepared a short summary in support of the proposed requirements and demonstrated that they should not be considered unreasonable. There is ample space within the AR district which can accommodate new solar uses with regard to the proposed restrictions. And most of what I've been offered has already been submitted on the record and posted online for everybody's review, especially the boards. So I would like to submit some maps of the following to be reported on the record. Summary of justifications for restrictions, I think we already provided that. A zoning map, which I have, oh, I should shake this screen. Because I don't know, just quickly go through the maps as well that I was there. A zoning map. Three maps showing all parcels within the AR district with three acres or more, and eligible part of parcels with access to three-phase power. Use this map here. A noting that, I'll get into the details of that in a second, a map showing the United States Army Corps of Engineers flow adjustments. And that's this map here in a bit, just a minute. And maps that show additional property restrictions. And that was, this sort of disconnected map of the town that's separated into quadrants in all those angles we're looking at, just a second with that. So, this is, this is the Town of Poplin zoning map. The CNI district, or C is in pink, on either ends of 140. That is currently the only areas in town which large-scale solar is permitted. The district in question for tonight is the AR district, which is the green area of the town, which is much of the town. I'll skip ahead to this one. And I did provide notes on the map to show for future reference what exactly the map is showing, and why it's showing what it is. The map here, all of the parcels that are outlined in, I'll say brown and red, these are all parcels that are located within the agricultural residential district. So these are all parcels that would be potentially available for this use.
Would I just interject?
Yep.
Just interject for a second. The big white blotches in the middle of these brown areas, it's townland, and so that's exempted. And then the places with the law, with the houses, and then it just, if there's just too much house, it's not going to be on this stage, correct?
Sorry, Chris.
Oh. Thank you, Mike.
Correct. So, so the wide spots of areas that are not filled in, these are either, folks might recognize as obviously being state forest or townland, as I just said, or other areas that are restricted either by conservation easement or some sort of formal protection. So they would not be eligible, obviously, for, or I would say, very, very unlikely to ever be considered under any new zoning for this use. Now, so those of them are moved. Also, what have been moved is any parcel under three acres, because in the proposed zoning language, only parcels that are three acres and over would be eligible for this use. So all of the acres under, lots under three acres, townland, state forest, or other open space, conservation protection, it all been eliminated to the best of my ability and noting as such from this map. And that's probably a good transition to this map that actually Mike Panko assisted me with. He went, I sent him that map that I just showed, and he went through the practice of noting additional land that he saw that would otherwise likely not be eligible for this use. It's unfortunate I didn't have time to incorporate these edits. It's a map that I just showed, but I'd love to show this anyway, which is, and I'm forgetting the key that's been provided here. Anyway, so every, every parcel that you see that's been noted with a triangle of some color is a parcel of land that is either currently in use, like I know one of them, he specifically called out was Cobbler's Creek. That would obviously be very unlikely that they leveled Cobbler's Creek and turned it into large-scale solar. And then there are other just townland and or state forest parcels that he noted that would not take it out of that initial map. So just provided for reference here. This is the top of the quadrants of the town, the very northern part of town, CNI, I think kind of to the top here. A large amount of land would be ineligible, as he noted, in the center. Skipping on down, this is Westboro Road. He noted a couple of parcels within this area of town on Westboro Road. This is the eastern part of town, this is East Street to the, underneath here, and that's East Street continuing to the left there. This is Miss Bell Hill and Juniper Road. This is, I think, some sort of conservation easement. And this is the southern portion of town, I believe that's the continuation of West River Street going down the left side there. So he, again, he just went through the practice of noting other parcels that would not be likely not considered. So back to my initial map as well, you'll see the roads, some of the roads I have colored in here, that is, it doesn't matter the coloration, you'll see pink and blue, both of which are existing three-phase power in the town. That's important distinction, because three-phase power is really the thing that's going to provide for this use. It's very likely that large-scale solar will be connecting onto parcels of land that do not have access to three-phase power. What is missing from this map, not only because of the three-phase power information is taken from National Grid's information, National Grid does not have the most updated maps reflecting that three-phase power, three-phase power actually goes down South Street. But as you see here from, from this map, South Street sort of is this string of white in between the parcels noted in brown. Many of these parcels, you know, they might be under three acres, actually they are under three acres, because otherwise they'd be noted as brown. So a large amount of those parcels would not be eligible for this use due to size restrictions, but obviously it would connect to some of the larger parcels in town, most notably this, this section here, I don't know if I can hide it, I can't, but I have my cursor hovering over it. This is the area that is the Sampins. So obviously it's a large swath of area over, over 80 acres, as well as some other large parcels of land down here. I'll just quickly switch over to this map, because this is also an important consideration that would also create limitations on any new use that would be enacted through this zoning change. And that would be the, what I mentioned before, the Army Corps of Engineers has a, what's it called, drainage? Flow adjustment, excuse me, flow adjustment. And so that's this, this pink area that is hovering above as an overlay over many of the parcels down the southern portion of the town. This, it would be, I don't believe parcel, this used to be able to go on those flow adjustments, because those are easements that have been written into, I believe, every deed of those, of each and every parcel of land that you see that it touches. My understanding is that those deeds restrict the development of such.
I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure about that. They do restrict development, but you could potentially have some compensatory storage, given that these wouldn't really reduce that much, the area of your water storage, as long as you're not worried about flooding under your, there are areas that are professional called, right? So any of these areas is subject to flooding, you can still store water under, under a solar farm, I believe, so that it may still be allowed. There may be some compensatory storage to make up for any, any structures that are associated with this, because there can be restructuring in these areas, but if the, if the posts that hold panels aren't going to wash away the mission, that they're protected apart.
Well, it would be, so a limitation nonetheless, so not, not an outright prohibition, but a limitation for sure they would have to. It's my understanding also Army Corps of Engineers would have to, even approve anything.
Yes.
That would go through adding another layer of review. So, I think that's about all I had. Oh, I just wanted to go through just quickly the justifications that were provided that I mentioned. And much thanks to Grace with this, she did a lot of work, assisted me on the research, grabbing, you know, going through all the Attorney General's recent approvals and reading all those bylaws, condensing it into something that was very useful that we could use, that can be transposed into something globally here. So thanks to Grace. So the justifications memo that we have here serves as a justification for the minimum requirements, like the dimensional requirements I mentioned, the minimum five-year clearing to be eligible for the, the use. I mentioned 100-foot setbacks. So all of that was captured in here, and Grace also looked through existing parcels in town that are within the AR district that would be a large amount to support this type of use, that wouldn't otherwise be prohibited or unreasonably restricted with these proposed restrictions, right? So she went ahead and noted, I'll just grab, there was, yeah, a zero South Street, which is 86 acres, and I believe this is actually the Sampin. The 86 acres in size, and it has approximately 15 acres of land that's been previously cleared. So obviously with, with, if, if the town were to adopt this bylaw, that a project on that site could potentially move forward without being, you know, essentially prohibited by any restrictions that we've placed through this bylaw.
Although, thank you. So the Sampin is 86 acres with 15 acres cleared, so they would have to run this, or it could be no more than 10 acres for them. I guess they would carve out that parcel.
So I was actually going to recommend that, that 10-acre maximum, maximum be eliminated, because it would create a conflict. So here we've noted, we went through the practice of noting where it would be overly restricted. I think actually if we were to incorporate the 10-acre maximum with noting that we have parcels that have over 10 acres of already cleared land, that would, that would be, might be considered overly restrictive in the eyes of the Attorney General's office to review this. So it's going to be my, my suggestion, should the board want to move forward with this, that you consider a remembrance that, that part of the proposed bylaw. Oh, I won't, sorry. Quickly again, I just, I may mention that this was certainly with the boards and committees. Kathy, you were cc'ing on some of the correspondence from the boards. The, oh, you just mentioned, land stewardship suggested, suggested making a preference towards existing disturbed area for solar. Again, I just wanted to highlight that, that's on everybody's mind, is wanting to encourage the use of existing land that's already been disturbed. It might be difficult to make that a requirement in this, just based off of the guidance that I've received from Town Council, based on all of the Attorney General feedback that they have provided to the different communities over the years. So making that a requirement might be difficult. Concerned that we try to work with people who have cancer to encourage, are clear things, but we can always hopefully fall back on, if adopted and approved by the Attorney General's office, the five-year minimum of having land already cleared for, to be eligible. Fire, I asked the fire department to take a look at the proposed bylaw, and they added comments relative to basic setbacks. I wanted to know, you know, what are they looking forward in, in order to get onto a site, and what's, what's a good amount of clearance between uses in order to, in order to mitigate for potential fires? They did not have comments relative to the panels themselves. Their main comments were for storage of energy of any kind onsite. I know just speaking personally to the building commissioner time to time, as well as fire attendants, that there's major concerns regarding, you know, electric car charging stations within homes, you know, they prefer to see it outside of homes with a good amount of fire rate and protection in between that and the house. There is a major concern, any kind of battery storage for this type of, you know, you have, if you're relying on your solar in order to be captured, like your own, to be captured on a battery that serves as backup energy for your home, there's concern about that being located in your house without the appropriate fire rate of protection around it. And so, concern about batteries, I think, is where they're coming from. So, but as far as the panels themselves, setbacks, they did have many comments that they say encourage, you know, continuing to look at national fire protection standards and figuring out ways how to incorporate that into our local bylaws, but not into the bylaws specifically. And so that, I believe that does it for my ongoing presentation. The, I would just ask the planning board in your review to consider any alterations to the language that you might want to see, and let Grace know now, how you'd like to proceed.
Well, I'm going to open it up for a couple of discussions with the planning board members first. I just wanted to start off with a question. When you have the last section of your justifications, is that, I assume that's not an exhaustive list of all the land that's available, that's just sampling of land that's available?
Correct. That's, that's meant to be a sample, we didn't have time to cover every person.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Okay. I'm going to use my prerogative, this chair, to start this conversation off real quick. My problem with this, even though I think there is a need for solar, and I think that certain locations in towns would be ideal for solar, and unfortunately the zoning, it's all nothing. You know, you either have to put it in an AR or you don't put it in an AR. And it would be, my guess, the only reason we've been considering this at this point is because the state has a gun to our head and says that you're gonna, you have to, you know, that you're soon going to lose. So what we're looking at here is whether we want to preempt that. So what we're looking at here is whether we want to preempt that and adopt a zoning change to allow solar with special permits, 100 foot buffers and, um, that sort of thing. Um, or else if we wait, if we don't lay out a blueprint on that and we wait to see if this thing comes up. And, you know, my concern, I mean, my preference would be to not do this at this point in time. And if we are sued and we have to do a zoning bylaw change, then we consider it at that point. Um, you know, that's not to say that, you know, we don't, you know, need more solar energy, it's just that you just can't do it in a, you know, without spot zoning in a very deliberate way. And I would, the one would not want a solar farm to go, I estimate, 100 feet away from my house. And there also was issue raised, I think you touched on, which, um, the, it was Open Space, it was Mary's letter.
That's for sure.
Where she asked, she had a preference because it was something you couldn't write in, but for agricultural land, because under this agricultural land could be used because it's, you know, be used for planting, not for cutting trees. And it's sort of a sense that you can't prohibit it from agriculture, if you can, you know, issue a preference, which probably would not carry much weight with a company that wants to put in a solar farm. So, um, with that little comment, I will hand it over to these folks and then we can focus on the line.
Um, so I think I'm going to respectfully disagree with what Kathy just said. We do, it does include the requirement that the land has been cleared for five years, cleared three to five years before the proposal comes in. I don't expect someone's going to intentionally clear their land, wait five years and then show up. It, it might happen some, but I suspect that that's not what's going to happen. The September of 2023 was full degrees Celsius, higher than any other September in record, on record. We are in a climate crisis. And although I, if you would ask me 10 years ago how I felt about this, or five years ago, then I would have said, I would have agreed with Kathy. I don't believe anyone, I don't think we can wait, we can't afford to wait as a community, we can't afford to wait this comes up, we can't afford to wait this world. So will this invite a few extra solar farms into autumn, potentially? Yes, but it does require that the land was there for five years before, uh, before they come into us. And so I, I don't think it, that it's not going to invite them to come in and clear land for solar. It is probably the closest we can come to really target the cotton properties we think are appropriate. And so, you know, I think that there will be some current agricultural lands that go over to solar. Uh, I know that there are some crops that some farmers, we actually have had Kelly come in and talk about the potential for solar with park underneath some, there are some crops that are shaped on it. So, uh, I think that this is really important. I also would agree, uh, with the proposal that we drop the 10 acre maximum because I, I do, I do see that that could potentially, or maybe raise it to 15, since we know that there is a property that has 15 acres of cleared land, um, we could potentially raise it to about 15 to accommodate that property, including DCs excluding five acres of protected
Thanks, Marta. So I, I understand that we do have challenges, whether there's pressure to allow alternate energy sources. Solar is a little, you're sitting next to it.
This is a little.
Yeah, it's tough. And, you know, Marta, we, we kept track of what land is subject to it. Not cleared land in five years, I think that's a farce, but the farmland is cleared. So what little farm land we have, that was to be tactical, to, you know, to solve. It's tough. I mean, I'm, I'm probably, I'll just go to the tech floor and let Marta agree to decide on that, but, and then they, we just did a sort of round table in, in Boston, there was a lot of pressure to look at alternate ways to get some, to get solar in, as in, you know, that is, parking lots. And most of the parking lots can be misinterpreted, right? Which is put the solar roofs out there or the parking decks, uh, most of the roofs don't have solar, you know, could be, could be needed. That's something I think we should look into before. I think you also look at, like, everyone did a great job on those maps, showing where three phase currently is, but, you know, of course, three days tomorrow would be throughout those, you really go look at it, pull those maps and say, this is where it could go. If this bylaw was in place today, it could go in here, get the three days, you know, the power company just decides to put it throughout, then you double, triple, four of the area. So it's definitely something that, and the maps are great because they show exactly that, they show where it could currently go and how much potential is. I would, if we're going to make tweaks to this, I mean, I'm not sure if we want it or don't want it, but I, I would get rid of the 10 acre limit, maybe put something else in. I don't think we necessarily want, you know, about 50 acre or 10 acre. Maybe you do, you know, maybe 60 acres on the, you know, on that scene that with an acre buffer's going around and that works, I just don't know. And a little 3 acres is too small to allow, um, you know, a parcel, I think it's maybe getting some sense for, this is a technical, what is the, and what are the sizes that we're seeing right now? Let's get, I hope Route 14, we've got a small one. Is that 3 acres or is it 5 acres? Either 1 acre. So maybe 3 acres is right, so I'm. 2 acres, excuse me, 10 acres is too, too small for the number. And I have one question for the table. If we do the bylaw change, that's, that is the tapping approval. If that comes in, then this board can then do, uh, rules of regs with respect to special permit process, that would be something that we need to do as well, right? So that we would have more, more ability to talk about screen and things like that. And that's just a hope here, correct?
Yeah, we're going to regulate the trades to be adopted just through the bottom here in that plan.
And we would need rules in place in this case.
Do, do you currently have rules in place? I believe you do. We currently have rules in place with what is existing in place.
Full then maybe.
Yep, so yeah, we should update those should this be.
So, okay, that, those are my comments, that's all of those.
I was just going to, through the chair, I wanted to, Kathy, Tom, if you have comments, uh, but, uh, just relative to the 3 acre minimum, it's, uh, just food for thought that the, the AR district is a 2 acre minimum for new house lots. Uh, so that might avoid a potential like piano key situation where you have, I'm talking about black keys, you know, um, but the, uh, you know, you're not going to have a creeping in, hopefully you wouldn't tap with that 3 acre. Obviously, uh, there would be standard frontage requirements for the district would apply as well, um, which maybe is 240 feet, so 200, uh, you would still be having a conforming parcel, a conforming law in order to, to, I just wanted to make mention that.
Ken, do you have any comment?
Um, I would like to, hey, everybody's code was on my phone, but I never heard your name. It's just not on my phone.
I'm having a hard time here.
Ken was just saying that he was having a hard time hearing her.
Well, Ken, I'll go over to our, I'll tell you everything that was said except for larger stuff.
Sounds great.
I would suggest that there.
Oh, sorry.
There's a couple questions on, uh, what if we end the bylaw, uh, do we have a bond that can put yourself out, where, where, which, uh, have a distribution of the, or just starting to be, uh, do we have, uh, do we, we have to act accordingly?
Decommission bond, like we do.
I, I believe you already have that in place on the existing bylaw and that's not, that hasn't, that's not proposed to change.
So could you repeat?
The laws and the rules that are involved.
Sorry, Tom, I was just going to, I was just requesting you to repeat what you said. Uh, so Tom, listen, correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, you were requiring as to the, the bonds that are submitted with a, a certain application be approved, a bond which would cover the cost of decomishinging, uh, solar, correct?
Yeah, including the materials on site that would be left over.
Including the hazardous materials on the site that would be left over, yes.
Excellent. And what is the conservation clause? Is it, is it a separate approval or any special, uh, special permit? Or is it part of the green board approval that is placed in the application?
Uh, through the chair, Tom's asking, um, what the conservation commission's role is in these approvals? Um, my, my response to that would be that, uh, the conservation commission, Tom, would only be involved, uh, should there be, um, you know, a, a wetland on the property that is being proposed to be, um, you know, the, the buffer around the wetland would be proposed to be approached upon, uh, or any other there, there jurisdiction. Is that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, the similar to the other counties where the planning boards, the approval is given all meetings, a group of those, those boards.
Sure, and the, um, through the chair, um, Tom just made a mention of requiring all other boards, uh, provide the necessary approval, that, yes, that would have to happen in, in, in a proposal like this, the necessary, the necessary reviews would only, two thirds of which would likely be through this special permit and, and site plan. Um, that's currently a requirement is that special, uh, that large scale solar requires site plan approval through this board. Obviously you addressed that during a, a special permit application as well. And then, and only if, um, there was wetlands on site, some other, uh, water body and jurisdiction of the concom, might require that RDA or NOI for the conservation commission. And then back to the discussion about Army Corps of Engineers, if you're, you're building within, uh, flood, flood hazard or flowage easements, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, Aaron Herbie, I bet, uh, Army Corps of Engineers would be happy to review any of the applications.
Any other comments from the board at this point, just when I turn it over to folks that they want to?
Just, just the next one, uh, the next one, I'm pretty full on.
Thanks, um, Grace as well.
Does anybody amongst you, do we have any questions or comments?
Well, typically the town, what do we get on?
Actually, I've got a few, because I, I can't hear you.
And if those only come up, we just stay in here.
Which can be 22, 30 times, what's in the town, what do we get on, other than the potential causing more water damage, clear cutting, when we don't have one?
I would assume tax runoff.
So, um, this, the way this bylaw is written, this is the land that already have, have been clear cut five years in advance before someone came into the proposal, so a developer is unlikely to clear cut wait five years in advance of the proposal. Uh, this really is going to be imposed in places like the sand pits and the Rard Club. Uh, and then, yes, as Kathy said, there's natural and, you know, more electricity on the grid, it's clean electricity, that's basically.
And I think the, uh, where this came up, I think it came up in sort of two ways. One was a specific proposal that got people thinking about it, but also it was some threat or it was a concern that if we didn't have a bylaw that, uh, allowed solar more broadly, then we could be told that our bylaw is too restrictive and somebody could come in with a proposal where we didn't want it, we didn't have, our bylaw could not be struck out to prevent them. So that we're trying to build a bylaw that could stand up to a challenge.
Just, you know, I think the other thing is, you know, the clear cutting is one thing, but the other thing is the agricultural land. I mean, I go up my suite and there are tons of houses that have, you know, five, six acres, seven acres of lots, and they're, they're cleared. They're either yard or they're a rubar or, you know, former farms that people have opted not to develop because they, you know, want to grow crops and stuff like that. So it's a lot of land enough to, you can put a solar farm in, um, that doesn't have to be clear cut. Um, so it, it, you know, just because you don't have to cut down, you know, you'd have to cut down trees for five years in advance, so, you know, there's still plenty of land that would be subject to this.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to, uh, you all now are unfortunately aware of if we need bylaws or can bylaws get waived, because we haven't met the, the requirement for portable housing in town. If someone were to challenge our bylaws, as has happened in some other towns, and the state said, oh, they're too restrictive, then again, we'd be in a position where we wouldn't have as much control. Whereas if we have a bylaw that the, that the state feels is not too restrictive, then we'd be able to actually enforce it in the, in the, in the event that someone comes up with proposals.
I just have a point of clarification for Mike, because I don't, I don't want to take up all of people's time to discuss this. Um, if I am correct, the way that the courts have come down on this is if Joe's solar farm developer, um, they're not getting approved, they're not getting their, their basic request approved. What's happening is the attorney general is saying that your bylaw is too restrictive, so you have to have a bylaw. So it's my understanding that we won't have a project thrust down our throat, at that point we will have to adopt a bylaw. And that was my understanding, I could be wrong, but.
Yeah, I'm unsure of the, um, what would come of a potential lawsuit. Uh, but I think what, one of the things that would definitely happen is that should, should a town be taken or challenged on the validity of any particular, uh, bylaw, the courts would say, town, you need to change your bylaw. And then maybe that town would be back to where, um, looking at that, uh, just speaking fair enough terms. So that would definitely be one thing. I'm, I'm unsure if, I think the trace of the case, um, Walden's, well, they had to allow, that, um, that was specifically an access issue. Um, the, the solar was built in Arlington, I think it was, or in Eastmore. And so Walden denied access through Walden because the access was to the zone that didn't allow solar, and said, that's not okay. Yeah, so that was slightly different, but that, that case law was useful, like I mentioned in my presentation, in the sense that it reaffirmed town's ability to regulate it based on public health, safety, and welfare. And that's why we provide a justification for the regulations that we provide. And, and it gave, it gave a, um, it focused on percents, like I said, um, the court said 1 to 2% of land available is not, so it did, you know, per town council recommendation was, hey, technically the percentage, and we were currently at 4%, so, you know, pretty close to a little ballpark that, that the court said, that's not.
Sorry, I'm going to monopolize. Is any other questions for these folks? Martin, um, Mike?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it's my. Martin, Marshall, I wasn't waiting, we can lay, um, do we have lane, lane, the timeline out, there is? Do we have land, land, that the town might have, that is, that, so they can't have houses and they can't have agriculture? And we could actually sort of put people in that direction rather than crack down on the rest? To me, I mean, it's the trees that, that actually built it, or give us the power, and if you want to have it, and to put up solar panels, it has, it has to be a scenario. So, it's sort of like, why, we don't really destroy our environment to put up solar panels. But I, I was just thinking that we have lands in areas that can't build, can't farm. There wouldn't be many houses around, like, could be planted in that, and I know the town owns the land, and I don't know if anyone's looked at that.
Well, zoning would still come into, have to be with land zone. And again, that's all we know, but, 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 um, while it's possible, it's unlikely that someone's going to come in and clear cut forest. So they, five years later, they'll put a solar farm. That's kind of taking investment in technology that might not even be, you know, relevant for five years, you know? So, the chances are that whose land is already, uh, see, I listened. Uh, land is already cleared, uh, or farmland, you know, or, you know, um, so I don't think, I, I think by the special permit, that would only be if we have a special permit. You know, when we put that as a condition in a special permit. And as Mike and Grace found out, that is why in other communities. Um, and if we don't have a by special permit, if that's not in our zoning law, then we would not be able to set those conditions. But then the whole issue then becomes, what is the attorney general going to say? And the ask that pretty much said, "Get yourself a bylaw, not that you have to take this plant." So, you know, part of the assignment is just kick this can down the road and see what happens, rather than lay out a whole demand. So, you know, that's, yeah. So, anybody else here, or should I check the people on the call? Okay, anybody online who wants to comment?
Is there anybody?
No, um, yeah, if, if anybody, if anybody is online, um, on the team's call and they'd like to comment, please do so. Okay, um, through, through the chair, I'll answer some questions. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, just like, uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, one is, um, could a larger grade be, um, be approved by the zoning board of appeals if this bylaw was an act? You know, if, if, if a developer wanted to come in, you know, twenty acre, um, in the planning board denied, could, could that developer notice the zoning appeals and get that approved? Um, that's, that's my first question.
Through the chair, the, the question was, um, if, if, uh, if, um, a project came forward, forth, and where were, the, the suggestion of increasing the maximum to fifteen acre, uh, this, what the question's predicated upon. If, if we, one fifteen acre maximum, and there was a parcel that was twenty acres, could the, the developer appeal to the zoning board to, to get the twenty acres instead of fifteen acre? Uh, Mike, not, not in the way that you described, um, because the appeal would have to go to court, um, if it were a planning board decision. Um, but it's a good question about, uh, variances and dimensional variances, the way that they're dealt with. Um, dimensional variances, as, as some, some of you might be aware, the zoning board hears all dimensional variances. They, they typically hear those when you're talking about very mundane things such as, I want to put a garage, that's going to be ten feet from my side of property line, and the requirement might be twenty feet from the side of the property line. Uh, so that you go to the zoning board for a public hearing, notify all the neighbors of the application, and the zoning board decides if he gets it put. And I'm, you know, I'm greatly oversimplifying what the zoning board does, but, um, that's just a, an easy example of what a dimensional variance is. And so, yeah, the question I'm arguing that, um, a developer could petition the zoning board for dimensional variance based on the requirements here, obtain a dimensional variance, and then go to the planning board for the, the appropriate special permit. Um, that is, that's certainly a path, I don't know if it would be a fruitful path.
Mike, uh, planning board had something similar to that. There was a developer that came in and wanted to do that, uh, do a solar farm on North Street, and they went to the zoning board first, with the idea that they had a use variance because it was, uh, like, it was the one in Zone C9. They got the use variance, and then there were issues as to whether they should have gotten that, that use variance. A lot of the neighbors, so they did not get appropriate notice and challenge it. But all I can tell you is whatever, when they came to the planning board, they needed, even though they had the use variance, they still needed a special permit and a site plan. This board, with not the exact membership, uh, unanimously gave them a site plan, uh, approved their site plan. And then we split two to two on giving them the special permit. Two members, I didn't treat it as a, now, hey, you've got your use variance, so you don't look at the zoning anymore. Uh, two other members said, hey, you need everything, you need a site plan, you need, uh, you need a zoning relief. Then you also need a special permit, and they said, we don't believe you should get a special permit because you're trying to put a solar farm in a residential neighborhood. And with a two to two vote, they didn't get it. But I suppose they could have gotten a different vote out of the board. So, but we, we got sued on that, and the, the result, without a, a decision as to whether the planning board was right or wrong on the split vote. Longer, if you'd like.
Mike, can you hear me? Uh, the general in the planning board's decision, uh, appealed to the official, uh, executive faith in, uh, the appointed officials, like, uh, zoning board, you know, for the executive brand officially, that'd be after.
Yeah, Tom, Tom, I haven't, um, weathered very many appeals of the planning board decisions, but I, I believe you're correct.
I think Mike, I have one question.
And, um, the chair was just asking Mike, uh, if, uh, because I think Mike had, uh, that was the first of, of two questions that Mike made on that.
Well, yes, my second question has to do with, uh, are the six special regulations for large-scale ground mono-solar installations? I was just wondering if the planning board was thinking about making modifications to those regulations, um, that would be more protective of the environment perhaps? Uh, and if modifications to those regulations, the current regulations in the zoning bylaw, I'm not sure they would, would that go before town meeting, any changes? So again, it's chapter three hundred and seventy, uh, the sixth. Thank you.
Yeah, uh, through the chair, that, that link I was discussing a little bit earlier, um, that we would have to update. Would, would a new bylaw or, or, I should say, updated amendment, uh, version of the bylaw be approved through town meeting? The planning board would be compelled to update its rules and regulations regarding special permits for this tos. Uh, so that'd be a practice that would lead to, this board would have to go ahead with, uh, should this bylaw be adopted at town meeting. But it's not, it would not be, it would not a town meeting action, uh, rules and regulations would be passed through a public hearing through this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Marcia has another question or comment?
Thank you. Um, I, I mean, I apologize because I don't know this, but nothing much. Are we, are we required to be closing around same houses so that it's not visible to the neighbors? Either fence and trees, or something like that?
The special permit that I think is language, it was a hundred foot buffer.
Yes.
Uh, it does not say anything about plantings or anything like that, just a hundred foot buffer.
No, it doesn't say anything about plantings, but I believe, I can look through our current bylaw. Um, I believe there is a landscape update that is required within the existing bylaw, right?
Yes, remember, the one that we were talking about, the North Street one? We, we required, for instance, that they, uh, I'm sorry, the, the North Street proposal, we required that they, uh, generate images of what it would look like from different, uh, different elevations, different viewpoints, you know? So, remember, they, they came in with all sorts of, you know, if you're standing in this person's second floor looking at the property, this is what you'll see. Uh, so, when we're, we show in, whenever we issue a special permit, the impact, the visual and sound impact, uh, and lighting impact on the neighbors is something that we always consider. Uh, so, you know, we are, we're often looking at vegetated buffers, um, even berms sometimes, we'll have, you know, elevated berms so that, that sound or, or light will be trouble. Thank you.
Subsection four of the existing bylaw, it's all about screening. So there are, there are protections in there. Um, and again, that is not changing as a result of this proposed amendment.
Just a question for Michael. Um, in, in a case like this, where you have a project that, I guess it's covered under the zoning adobe, um, because we don't have the ability to look at quality of light impact, such as noise and light, correct?
I would say you do.
We do?
Yes, uh, because, because, uh, town councils, in town council opinion, you, uh, your ability, the town's ability to require a special permit means tax, that, that means that you can evaluate applications based on public health, so, safety and welfare. So I think, um, uh, quality of light.
So we could reject a proposal that would be on sound legal footing if the lighting was not, or the noise, or?
That would remain to be seen. I mean, in a case by case, I wouldn't be able to promise you that, uh, you would deny something based on lighting now.
Yeah.
But it's, I mean...
These things don't produce lighter lights.
No, I mean, it's just, it's just an example, I see your point, but, um, it would, yeah, you would have to be, possibly, in case by case, you have to evaluate based, every application based on its own merits. If for some reason a particular application is creating, you know, way too much, uh, light, you know, for whatever reason they wanted, uh, an insane amount of, uh, security lighting around the perimeter of a particular, uh, development, which I don't think they would, but this, for example, uh, we do have controls within our bylaw for lighting issues. So you might be able to deny it based on that because it wouldn't comply with other portions of the bylaw.
Me.
Me, well, that, you might be up for some sound legal footing on that because it's already spelled out elsewhere in the bylaw. Um, and I don't believe the planning board has the ability to approve, uh, applications that don't conform to zoning.
And Catherine just, yeah, this one works, okay.
So you mentioned yoga, we, even with the new church, when the church went in, we, we had them put in screening for lighting. And e- even though it would be covered, or, they did that. Same, 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 so that, the neighbors who were there, and I would hear, there was definitely screening for lighting.
Any other questions from?
I wouldn't move to the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Margaret's second. Um, so let's vote, Tommy?
So the, the, uh, well, the motion, oh, yeah, the motion is to close.
Close the public hearing, yes.
Yeah.
And before you go for a motion to vote, can I just ask the online audience as to whether or not they were able to hear most of the public hearing? Uh, because if not, I would ask, would we be able to vote on a formal vote if, if folks online were able to hear? So if, if, if you're online, if you can hear it now, um, if you could just indicate whether or not you're able to, um, hear a substantial amount of the discussion tonight on this side.
That's just, Tom, I was, I'm aware of, I read it, I think, but I can hear tonight, not, not all.
This is Bill Catherine, his second, can you?
I agree.
Marcia, I was, I was, I heard nothing in the planning board's decision.
This is Ken saying.
But I know, um, I could understand the chairman, but like, um, said that when you went to the planning board, you were higher, it was real hard.
Okay, Mike, I didn't hear a word that he would say, so what is the general consensus?
The general consensus is no. They, they couldn't hear much, I mean, they got the gist of everything that was going on, but, but not as far as details. I would just suggest...
Well, yeah, well, let's, let's finish the motion to close the public hearing, and then, um, I just got to do that.
The way to close the public hearing, and then continue.
Oh, so we continue. Okay.
Town plan.
Oh, okay.
You cannot get the best, you're, I, I will withdraw my motion.
Would you like to make another motion?
I would make a motion to continue this public hearing to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is the twenty fourth of October, seven oh five, you know?
And I will second to that motion.
There was a motion seconded by the board to continue the public hearing on this matter until October twenty fourth, two weeks from now, seven oh five. No, it's, it was seconded.
So, Tommy?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, and that is aye, so this is your dad. Okay, so this, uh, decision for, is to continue to the next meeting. Okay, so...
Which will do it, uh, more consistently.
Yeah, we'll do it down here, okay. So, um...
We just continue?
Okay. So, um, it is, I know, it is eight thirteen, and I would like to open a, um, public hearing to see if the town will amend the town Upton zoning bylaws, three hundred dash three point one, to avoid principal uses, which seems to allow certain personal services and usements as a right within the Upton Center Business District. Um, and, and you plan on making a summary of what this is?
Yeah, this will be much more brief, uh, and hopefully everybody online can hear this one. Um, uh, this one's pretty to the point. In the Upton Center Business District, which was adopted in, what, twenty nineteen? Recently, or so, adopted recently, um, the table of uses for that district require special permits for some odd uses. I think one of those uses being, uh, Chris came up. Special permit for a gym, fitness center, yoga and Pilates studio, acupuncture, esthetic, chiropractic, and other similar personal service establishments. Um, it was, when, this comes to my attention, there was, uh, I think it was somebody who was actually inquiring about, uh, putting up a yoga studio, um, in, in the Center Business District here. When I looked into it, I realized it requires a special permit for some reason. Um, and it, I, this is something I went over with the Economic Development Committee. They, they supported this, this article, um, they agree that it does not make a whole lot of sense for a yoga studio, especially if they're just filling out existing space, existing empty retail commercial space within our Center Business District, that they'd be required to go through a formal special permit hearing process. Uh, that is, that's quite humorous for somebody looking to just start up a, a yoga studio. Um, so that, with a whole, a bunch of other uses noted, um, you know, a tailor, a bicycle repair shop, blueprinting establishment, these are all things, you know, massage therapists, these are all things that really should be allowed by right with maybe just a tenant fit out, uh, building permit, uh, but not a formal public hearing through any, any.
And were there not, um, similar uses with different names that were allowed? And were there not, um, similar uses with different names that were allowed? Am I right?
That's.
Isn't that part of the reason is because you can't have a gym where you can have a health club or the other way around?
I, that, that, yeah, that's exactly the example. There, there was, uh, personal fitness was allowed, I think, boys, but, but a gym wasn't. It was something like that, but yeah, it was, um.
And there was a spa thing, it was a cause you could allow, but you couldn't, you could allow massage, but not a spa?
This, this, this article seeks to correct for that convention.
Yes.
That's it.
So do we have any discussion on that? You know, again, as chair, I think makes perfect sense because it seems silly that we allow some of these uses and not others. If we have a downtown development district, then we should encourage downtown development. Follow your comments.
No, I mean, we discussed it at our public meeting, so I don't have any comments.
Margaret, same. Tommy and Ken, do you have any comments?
Nothing further, Ken.
Tom?
I don't know much, Tom. You know, I have none of the changes of effects or something, uh, without the requirement of certain, that happens, and it would become active from me for a site plan, but certainly not the changes to a certain, I think that, uh, that.
So does anybody, you three have any comments? Okay, and does anybody else on the poll have any comments? Hearing none?
I would move to close this public.
All right, we'll second, Margaret's second, um, is there any discussion? Okay, let's take a vote. Tom?
I do not, if you need, do you have a motion to?
Oh, I haven't, I haven't heard that one, sorry.
You have to close.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Never take this.
I'm sorry.
You're right.
Okay. Tom? We'll take your vote to close the public hearing.
Yes.
Okay, Ken?
Aye.
Margaret, I, Paul, and I vote aye, Mr. Tanner. Do I hear a motion to, or actually, I'll, I'll make a motion to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Upton zoning bylaws three hundred dash three point one, table of principal uses which seeks to allow certain personal services and usements as a right within the Upton Center Business District. Do I hear a second? Second. Okay, second, second. Any discussion? Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret, aye. Paul?
Uh, I don't think you recommend a.
To recommend, so there's, okay.
Yep, so I, I.
And Catherine is an aye, so it is unanimous. Okay, so, the last one is, um, at eight ninety, um, like to open the public hearing to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Upton general zoning bylaws to replace the language of Board of Selectment with Select Board. Um, any conversation? Um, aye, so let me hand it to the plan.
I, I don't, I don't have much on this. Uh, this was, this was, uh, an article that was sourced from the Board of Selectment, uh, made to vote to, to pursue this.
So basically, I guess the Board of Selectment, which has two women, one guy on.
There's also no, you have someone who'd like to speak to it.
Oh, well, first, we, this is.
I think Joe wants to speak.
Oh, hi, Joe. You can speak to it.
Hello, hi, hello. Uh, so, I mean, this is, this is, uh, pretty straightforward article. Actually, it's two articles on the town meeting, one for, um, amending by, uh, general bylaws, zoning bylaws, to replace Board of Selectment with Select Board, and the second article, which, um, you know, isn't before you, but it's before town meeting, uh, will be to, um, uh, petition the legislature to make changes to a special act that references Board of Selectment and to replace with Select Board. Um, this is something that is, uh, has occurred in a lot of towns, and, um, Board of Selectment voted to also, uh, make this change to more of a neutral name for the board. So that's basically it.
So any, any discussion from Margaret, Paul, any comments? No, I think it's ready. Okay, Margaret thinks it's ready. Um, anybody, Tom, do you have any comments? Ken?
I'm a pro.
Good, good. That is really why you put the back chopping wood, right? Um, any comments from the, uh, audience? Anybody online? Margaret, do you want to make a motion? So you said it was a better idea.
I move that we, uh, that we move an article, oh, I moved to, moved to close the public.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Okay, Tom?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Catherine, aye. Okay, so that is unanimous, and, um, do we want to vote on?
Yes. That's right.
I move that we ask town meeting to replace Board of Selectment with Select Board in the general and zoning bylaws.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none? Tom?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Catherine is aye, so it's unanimous. So now, back to the regular scheduled meeting, um, just to.
Now, Chair, for you, I would just, uh, suggest for everybody still on, uh, the meeting, um, because the public hearing for the solar was continued to the next hearing date, I'll, um, update and, uh, I will upload my presentation to the website so everybody has that, um, and can leave that prior to the next, um, hearing, so everybody can be above or in the midst of the conversation that's happening this evening. That's all I want to say.
Okay, well, now, we'll turn to our interview. Um, can we just, wait.
Does Jonas hold his hand up? Sorry.
Yeah.
What?
Jonas, second.
Thanks, Planning Board. I just wanted to add on to what, um, Mike just said about that first article. Um, uh, since the Planning Board is continuing that public hearing to the twenty fourth, the Board of Selectment will, um, be executing the warrant on October seventeenth, so the article language that is printed, uh, will be in the warrant, so anything that you may be, you may want to change or, um, on the vote, you would just need a handout for town meeting.
Um, actually, if we are to, if we were to raise, sorry, if we were to raise the, uh, limit of ten acres to fifteen acres, would that still be considered within the four corner, corners of the article because it's an increase in acreage? Or should the Select Board increase that, uh, and then give us some, some flexibility?
Um, I can, I can talk with Mike at town council.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Um, would people have a problem if we switch the, um, second item to the third? Second item, is nobody?
No.
Okay, um, because you guys have sat through this. Um, yeah, you're, so, um, discussion on Leonard CBA, um, two CBA regarding proposed forty seven Main Street forty B project, um, is discussed in our last meeting. Um, the Board of, of the, of the, the Planning Board, um, did develop a letter, um, which is, uh, online and sits in the package for this meeting, um, stating, uh, you know, as, as we discussed last time, um, you know, outlining the process that we would normally go through and the restrictions that are normally, um, you know, in place, um, in a SRA, that you're required, um, so that letter is, is, has been drafted. Um, you know, if, if anybody, um, you know, you did make comments, Marcia, you were speaking for the move at the last meeting, you made comments, um, I'm looking at letters as we're, as we're talking. Um, you know, uh, you made comments, um, is there anything else that you have to add at this point, or?
I think this is kind of down, it's with the new website, it's not, I can't find it on the board. I, I have the agenda, and I have the data, but I didn't see it online. Thank you very much. So while, while Grace is looking at that, I just have one, I was, well, Grace, I'm sorry. While Marcia's looking at that, at the letter, uh, one suggestion that I have is in the very last line on the first page. It says, "which includes and is not limited to compliance with state conservation laws." I would change that to the state law protection act.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, uh, while I, uh, thank you for, like, Grace finding the, probably the prior letter, and, you know, I know that some folks are looking, that you've, you've got it remarkably close. Because I think part of the problem is too, you know, some folks are going to want to say nothing on this issue because it's not before this board, some folks are going to want us to take up a very strong position in one way or the other. Um, and I think because it's not before this board, we don't really have all the tools in our tool box on this one. We normally send it out to, uh, our junior engineer and have that back and forth with the developer and with the town. And we don't have the developer before us, um, they don't have to be before us. So I think what we have done, sort of, you know, raise our hands, A CBA, these are what we think are important things to consider, but we really can't tell them how to do their job, and we don't know what the back and forth is, so. I know the little letters, but it's, it's what our role is in this.
I want to echo what Paul just said, it's, um, normally, um, we would have an engineer consultant come in to help us work through details like wetlands and, you know, um, what the drive is and lighting and things that we can't, that haven't been able to measure. So it's not something that we can comment on, and even if we could comment on it, you know, this is not an issue before us, um, I mean, if you could recommend or not, this is not an issue before us. So I have no more to talk to, we have neither the tools nor the funding to, um, you know, to go any further than this letter did, because this is what the district is, is we have, this is the district, this is what we're looking for. So this is something that, you know, when you're doing your review, these are issues that you should take into consideration. So I, I think that's what we tried to achieve in this, in this letter.
It shows a lot of thought, I think.
Now, Chair, I just, uh, posted in the chat, for everybody's reference, all meeting materials can be found on the new website. If you navigate to, uh, Government, um, on the new website, Government, and then find Planning Board, and then on the left side, this is tab for meeting materials, that's where all meeting materials are being posted. That's, uh, similar to how the last one, the website was, was utilized, but I understand with the, how they put the new login. It's gonna, it's gonna get some time, take some time to get used to.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll try to make it easier, and maybe, um, Grace and I will link, um, uh, provide that link to that, uh, tab in every agenda posting if we can, um, so that's easy, it's easy, quick, quick.
And I assume that, um, the zoning board has a similar website, so all the letters that any town, because town organizations were invited to comment, and we have not submitted our letter yet, but our letter will be on the ZBA, uh, meeting materials website as well, so that would be acceptable to be that.
We will be posting all of the, all of the public hearing materials. Yeah, we'll be posting all the public hearing materials on that, on this website, and that's similar.
If you have a hard time getting it, you know how to reach Joe. So, um, anybody on the poll, any comments? On the letter?
Anybody online?
Uh, Mike, you have, uh, uh, two, two major points, who recommend, uh, planning board, and, uh, all the picture one, that the design, and it, and it did that, and it was a problem about, number two, uh, not using, uh, managed land or anything like that, 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 I think, should be reminded. It would be difficult for the town, uh, this type of an activity, because we're going to go out for a public section, and that, I think.
Yeah, they won't do that. Um, I mean, the, the, that's, you know, if, if, if we don't have our ten percent, um, it doesn't matter if we have master. The only thing that matters is if we, we, you know, I mean, it's complicated, but we could get, say, harbor if we were adding more units, but we haven't gotten there, so we are way below that. Um, so it's, you know, it's because we have the master plan, so the housing production, the housing is first step. So, um, just looking here, um. Do you, um, do, just, you know, just asking folks here, um, the paragraph is just following studies and reports, um, those studies and reports, what, is there a place where we can put potential impact on the town, um, potential, uh, like, uh, changes? We, I mean, we could do, what about adding quality life?
So it does say change in neighborhood slash town character.
So we could add residents' quality life. So are folks good with that? So Grace, um, I think if you add, um, markets change compliance with the Wildlife Protection Act.
Yep.
And then, um, impacts on wildlife that, uh, changes residents' quality life or neighbors' quality of life after, okay? And then I can sign off.
So the, the other question that I have is we're saying impacts on drainage, we're saying about flooding in the adjacent neighborhood, do we want to make that any stronger drainage?
That was not in the, in the lightest map.
Oh, I know it's not in the flowage, I know it's not in the flowage, I'm just talking about the neighbors, so it said that area has significant flooding, and right now it says, uh, we would consider impacts on drainage and water supply. Do we want to, do we want to make that any punchier drainage?
Kind of flooding.
Calm flooding.
And wash.
Just to make it a few nights harder.
I agree. It's, it has been one of the big issues, so putting a work in for flooding, that's one of the things that neighbors are most concerned. Uh, as the chair, uh, is the weapon, uh, that heads down, uh, well, that's, that's, that's our vision, goes downhill, actually, the drainage, uh, uh, to the drain, and we, uh, here's a project that, uh, what, uh, what drainage is, uh, wondering if you can get any meaning on the increasing importance of protection in the avenue to bring it out of, of that, or they go with.
Um, can you translate? I mean, I, you know, just for the little bit I heard Tommy, that would be, you know, the zoning board.
When you did that, if, when you did that, uh, the drainage, the surface, the cell surface, well, I can get.
But that was under our purpose.
This project would now be saying impact.
You have another one?
But this isn't under our purpose, so we can't research that. We can't ask, we have something at the zoning board.
No, but.
Hopefully we'll do, so that's something we could add to this left.
Yes. Okay. I can't wait, Roger, any idea of what's done by, which is all, but then, if we transfer it up, then we can.
Okay.
Do we have?
So I think, I think he wants to just highlight, highlight, so. I think I can get it, Tommy. Maybe, so, on that second page, it was saying impacts on drainage, comma, flooding, and water supply, and then you had another clause, impact on the, uh, no, I guess, I guess impacts on drainage, flooding, and water supply, if we say with respect to the project and surrounding neighborhoods, does that get you where, you know, is that a little point for you to, you know, point the, the ZDA in the right direction?
Yeah, something like that, if, if there is a runoff, well, we have, or the planning board, that I may not be developed, like, leave, because of that, next to the drain, they probably put a, you know, build a zone somewhere along that, along the street.
Do we want to add enough comments, say, run, flooding, runoff, water supply?
Well, I'm just wondering if this project has, here, with the previous planning board to have, land, that, or that.
So, Tommy, maybe, we've already gone in here, compliance with the Wilderness Protection Act, impacts on wildlife, impacts on drainage, flooding, and water supply, but back previously, when we talk about typically reviews the site plan to verify, yada, yada, if the project is determined to be in performance with town bylaws or requirements, we could also put in there, uh, that the project is consistent with all prior, with other, with prior planning board approvals and restrictions, I'm trying to think how to say that.
You got it.
Because we, because, yeah, no, if there are restrictions that the planning board has put in place, I don't know that we actually have the ability to put restrictions on lots other than the one we're looking at, but if this lot is, was one of those, if this was part of something that had a restriction, we should check.
Sure, there's a lot in my neighborhood that, that somebody can't, they came back 20 years after everyone was built, and said, we want to build in this lot, and so what's a drainage, specifically set aside for drainage, so the property adjacent to this, or it's going to be impacted by this, was specifically a drainage area for a neighborhood, I think, I think that, that language would cover it, so everything needs to be consistent with, should be, should be consistent with prior planning board approvals and restrictions with respect to the prop, the property and any properties involved in this, is that, is that what you did, that's on?
Yeah, we're in a need position to go back here and, and, and follow that we're in that area, good trust.
But you're okay with the language that Paul just proposed? Because I think that addresses your problem.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so keep to yourself, and, Tom, Tom, I can get it off, and then I'll have a word.
On the map, sorry. On the map that went to mass housing, it showed that the skirt district ended before your property, just covered the driveway, and I pulled up, this stuff from the state, uh, it's called cultural register, and it shows the zone, which includes a whole person property, including that area.
I mean, that's an issue, though. Yeah, you know, yeah, that's something, okay, so it's like, yeah, and we would have considered, and it would have, it would have helped us base our, you know, would have helped govern our decision, but we couldn't have been able to do that, and.
Yeah, but I was hoping at that point, is if the, when, when to get the initial approval, didn't represent correctly, the historic district.
That's important, yeah. Not, not that we're dying, you know.
We are, yeah.
So is there any other conversation, or will be changes discussed, or are folks okay if I?
I am okay.
Tom, are you okay if I sign it, or those comments?
I am, yeah.
Okay, and, yeah?
Yeah, I'd like to turn that.
Okay.
I actually have a comment and a question, so the comment is, thank you very much. I slightly have to go, sorry. I want to thank the board for this, I think you included all of our concerns, and I know we've, we've, you know, you're, it's kind of this, but we appreciate you backing us in whatever way you put it, so, two is, can you tell me, Michael, not like people can communicate, because Michael is the villain plus some.
I don't have that, and, Joe, it's a little passive, there's a lot, it's a little passive, the committee, center room.
I told you that's feels like 114.
Where, where does it come from, is it going to be a, a, oh, it's going to be a community center? Okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, that's been on my mind as well, is ensuring that we have enough space, I was, uh, second guessing that maybe we should push it to the high school, but I think, I think 114 capacity, given the turnout that was at the end, that the board selected, which was a, a large turnout, and still only really filled, I think, half of that room, because I think the back half was not open at that time, based on that, we should be, but, be in contact with me if you think we're going to exceed that, and we will make other arrangements.
Okay. No, you guys have been extremely gracious, and we do appreciate that, and we appreciate your, the, being online, you know, with that wonderful exception, wasn't somebody actually in any of these meetings, and, you know, it's been very respectful and very understanding, you know, very critical, so, I, I do appreciate that. We're not lying in our pockets, I promise you.
That wasn't up though.
I know, but, it's like, you want to, but you're doing a good job of something, and someone does that, like, smack them, you know, like, but anyways, okay, okay, next slide on the agenda, to get back to our regular meeting, discussion on the town's right of first refusal, Kelly Sparr, I do not believe that there was a bona fide offer made on that, and, so, and if not, then we should just defer this until it becomes real.
Yeah, to the Chair, we're fortunate that the town manager's still on, Joe, has there been feedback from the town council as to the status of that, that request?
Since I have amended, uh, offices early last week, I'd have to get back in touch and, uh, see if there was any clarification, so right now I'm not going to try.
So, but I, I.
I feel, I feel, Joe, I think, uh, you gave the same family that still used the product, the same use, right, that was involved down, so, the, the family.
My understanding is that's correct, Joe, is, is that if, if, if a portion of land is being segregated off to be transferred to a family member, then they would not have to go through this formal process, but because the intention is to carve off a piece of land and remove it from chapter, chaplain, to be sold on the general market, that it does have to go through this process, and then the question remains, has the process actually beneficially started, because there was not a purchase and sale that accompanied the, the, that's what we're trying to figure out now, and I think we still have plenty of time, even if there were, even if town council came back and said, yeah, it counts as a, as a, as a.
The clock has started.
The clock started from the original letter, I think we still have plenty of time to, to provide a recommendation.
Any other comment on that, questions? Then I'm going to suggest that we wait until we just defer it to the next meeting, we can bring it up again, since it's in one relationship, and then there is a second , um, request, April 13, Margaret Stanton has requested, um, to move a piece of land on their old farm, um, to sell as a parcel of land, 61A, from, you know, it's been chaplain, and she would like it released, it's right next to, was it, is it Summer Circle?
Summer Circle.
You guys talked about that, right? Yeah, I don't have any problem with that, it's consistent with the, you know, the neighborhood, she did ask if she wants it to move expeditiously, I don't know how expeditiously you can move the process, and she, she does have a bona fide letter.
But that's not, right, maybe it's like, planning board is making determinations to whether she can take the land out of chaplain, right, because, is it like first refusal triggers to the town, whether it's not bona fide or, if she wants, just.
Well, there is.
Other, others, so the town, so the town, yeah, triggers, will we?
Yes.
Yeah, I actually have problems with, with, you know, I mean, with, with town, I don't know, do they, are they?
Yes, so this goes to the planning board for a recommendation as to whether or not you think the town should exercise its right of first refusal, and in doing so, you take a look at the plan, take a look at the surrounding land, decide if it's of any significant value to the town, that you think that the town should exercise that right, I would, I would suggest to the board, that, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust is not yet in a position to act on something like this, or it's a, or it's a fall on their shoulders to, to potentially purchase, in coordination with board selection, the, but speaking to the land itself, like Kathy was just, Chairman was just noting, is that, but, if, looking at the plan, it's a, the front corner of that lot, which immediately abuts Summer Circle lots, which is immediately adjacent to, to two other, I think, six lot, or seven lot subdivisions right across the street, it doesn't connect to any existing open space, doesn't connect to any town forests, doesn't connect to any preservation, conservation areas, it kind of exists in isolation, so I don't think, in, in my review, there would be no benefit from that perspective. Again, the only, the only thing that comes to mind is if, for some reason, there, there was an ability for, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust to act on it, to, to get something onto that lot, but, again, they're, they're not in a position to, to make anything like that happen at this time.
And it's also, it's also, you know, quite small, I mean, you can't fit, you know, even if the trust wasn't positioned to act on it, it might not be something the trust would choose to act on. So, you folks, are folks comfortable, is there anybody on the call representing Margaret Stanton, or the, okay, I don't have a problem.
Do we need a motion of notice?
Yeah, I would suggest that you make a motion to either exercise, suggest that the town exercise, or not suggest that the town exercise.
Okay, I'll make a motion to recommend or suggest.
I would suggest that the motion be, if you don't want to recommend action, that the planning board make a recommendation to the board selection to not exercise first right of refusal.
Yeah, that.
You can just say so.
Okay, I make a motion that the, uh, planning board recommend, um, to the board selection that have not exercised its right of first refusal on proposed growth rate law, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'm sure, yes, typically, the planning board will be asked, if it's the highest investment, property, the part of the tax and, and, or, or, it seems to be in a high question currently, I agree with you, not moving to a five.
I can hear the question.
The, the Chair, Tom, Tom was suggesting that the board typically looks at the highest investment use of the land when making a recommendation like this, and then he also suggested that what is proposed is the highest investment use.
Okay, any other thoughts? Okay, so motion is made, second, no further conversation, I can follow the question. Tom?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Margaret? Hi, and Catherine is high, you can ask. Okay, um, the next discussion is, thank you, Paul, for this one, is on discussion of the planning boards available CMRPC hours and alternate acquisition.
So, yeah, it was just, well, I think it was, this was, it came up at a CPC meeting, we were talking about, the, uh, which was, what was the project, yeah, it was the Affordable Housing Trust folks, and what they were trying to do over the coming months, and I just raised the question as to whether the planning board, and, the planning board is sort of the gatekeeper for CMRPC hours, by, by the number of town, we get a certain number of hours each year, the Central, this regional planning commission, and the planning board has, gave, among those hours, in those hours, out to other boards and committees and projects, so I didn't know if they had any hours which remained here, and whether they were spoken for, or whether it was something that the Affordable Housing Trust would have to ask for.
So, through the Chair, I wish to have the CMRPC specifically asked that question, the last update hours that they had available were 12 hours, they responded saying they haven't looked at the most recent updates, to look at additions to those hours for the last couple of months, so it's probably a little more than 12 hours available.
So, one, one thing that has come up to my, certainly today in an email, was about requiring solar, and I do think that that is something else we could ask CMRPC to look at town bylaws, in towns that are being proactive around climate change, and, you know, requiring solar or solar siting in the, in subdivision bylaws, and other planning in town for, for finding alternative resources, either solar or, or geofin, we think that's, I think sometimes we'll.
Yeah, speaking for the Affordable Housing Trust, we can have a rest of the battles, we desperately need support, we, you know, I'm Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust, and we just rebuilt each other after years of basic, of zero electricity, and we we just, um, rebuilt each other after years of basic, uh, of zero activity, and we work very hard to just to be trace what's been done in the past, and where we stand financially, um, where we stand as far as, um, you know, what we own, how to get rid of it, I mean, right now you have a property on, partner ad north that we need to get rid of, which is, but there's so much stuff that just needs to be done, uh, we staffed, and we don't have any staff, so it's just sort of been, you know, the folks on the board trying to make a deal with this, and so, you know, any help we can get from CMRPC, and I talked to Mike previously on this, about, you know, getting, you know, CMRPC to, to help on this type of.
I, I give you one, it's, it's just all, that wasn't something I should do, it's, I just thought, that's another thing that has come up.
Yeah, no, there's tons of, yeah, it's, yeah. So, so, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the process is, but we, maybe the first step is to see what hours we have left.
Well, so it sounds like we have about twelve hours left, maybe a couple more, it's, and we do have a solar bylaw, we're still talking about, but CMRC, we see, probably could react to that before we get to town, you know, our next meeting, so, like, the Affordable Housing, yeah, if, if somebody wants those hours, that's really what I was thinking, I think you would need to, anybody who's looking for us to support them with those hours, should get on our, uh, cabinet and say, this is what we need, we'd have to reassess that, and, and as to whether it was an appropriate use of those hours, whether it would make a difference, whether it's within the CMRPC purview, so, have, if you didn't, if that group wanted those hours, then sort of formally, what they would be looking for, maybe you can check that CMRPC is C, or CMRPC to C, that that is something that they would be able to help with, that will be helpful, didn't mean.
If the hours expire in the calendar period?
Physically, yeah.
Oh, so, so it's not till the end of?
Yeah, maybe.
Okay. So, yeah, okay, so if we can just put that on the next agenda, to see if.
You're the agenda keeper.
Okay, is that great? Okay, um, and, other topics, nobody, I haven't had any other topics except for Jeremy.
I didn't have that.
Have you owned an Alton that's still?
Oh, Alton, we don't have an Alton.
Correct.
Do you want to be an alternate on a plane? You guys are flirting up.
Now, we're talking Tuesday night.
Yeah, um.
We got the town manager to stand up on.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry, I gotta move the screen more often.
Hi, I'm sorry to butt in, um, we do have the advertisement under volunteers for board and commission, uh, members for the CMRPC alternate, so, uh, it's out there, if you know of anyone, have them submit an application to the board of selectmen's office, town manager's office, anyone that has half planning experience, or got out of planning, wants to get a foot back in, just let everyone know.
Did you say CMRPC alternate or planning board alternate?
Twent.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I was just thinking.
So, yeah, board of selectmen also have an alternate to CMRPC, um, which, um, is currently pending, so, that would also, having our participation levels increased, that also requires us more hours for CMRPC technical assistance.
Um, you know, I was sure if you know people that like the interest in this, the alternate, the only thing they vote on is, um, just a purpose, um, but, you know, folks.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you meant, I, I'm sorry, I, I mentioned the alternate for CMRPC.
No, no, which, I think, which I think should be, just, I got the planning board.
But, but there's two, so.
And those are two, alternate positions, that, or that, or CMRPC, and then if there's a vacancy on the planning board for the alternate, um, then, then we vote, and the salary's the same.
You know, basically, um, you know, it's, it's a position for who's interested in learning more, um, and then when one of us steps down, you know, it's nice to, you know, the last guy in the hat, like, everything's wonderful, like, every meeting, and, uh, you know, he's, he's missed, um, but, you know, so if you have any friends, if you know anybody that might be interested, then if you just reach out to, you know, let us know, because it's a good, you, you know, you see what we do, how we operate, the role of, like, a town, which I think is pretty significant, so.
Dinner time.
Dinner time, okay, I can't do that.
You're close to it.
I like your, your.
So.
Okay, for sure.
All right, thank you.